Good morning. Welcome to the Thursday, July 17th Commissioners Open Session. We're at 10:00 AM this morning because of employee recognition this morning, and I think we're ready. So as we always like to do, we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm proud of you, Carol. And I've got a 50/50 chance of being right. I think we start over here.
I think it is. I think it is. Good morning, Carroll County. I want to, I'll be brief this morning. I want to start out with one thing. I want to wish Commissioner Ed Rothstein congratulations on his appointment of Secretary of Maryland Department of Veterans and Military Families. What a tremendous honor, and what an honor to you and your family who have been part of that service and sacrifice.
Thank you.
So congratulations, Ed. Congratulations. And then a quick note about the volunteer fire carnivals. We always bring that up. The Winfield Carnival just ended, and up next is the Mount Airy Volunteer Fireman Carnival, starting on Monday, July 21st. Don't miss it. I hope you're there. That's a pretty big one. It's almost like a four-county carnival, if you will. So please show up and support your volunteer fire companies. And then after that is Hampstead, and then that's it for the carnival season. So everybody, yeah, it sort of went fast. And they've been, they've had a tough summer with the weather. So just please keep that in mind and do what you can to show up and support them.
And if I'm, don't forget, even though we have a combined service, there's still volunteers and their fundraising is still a critical part of making the whole system work.
Absolutely. Critical part, and being there to support them is equally as critical. So thank you very much. And that is all for me.
Thank you.
Good morning, Carroll County. Just want to echo Commissioner Garen's comments. Also, Commissioner Rothstein, I know you and I spoke the other day, but wanted to formally publicly congratulate you. I know you'll do a wonderful job in that role and look forward to working with you in that role in the future.
Thank you.
Interesting little fun fact that I learned yesterday. Apparently, this has occurred one other time in Carroll County history from a commissioner's standpoint, which was in 1962. I was made aware of that yesterday. Apparently, we had a commissioner that passed away, and his replacement did not last long and stepped down. So they had to replace twice within, I believe it was a year's time.
Wow.
But a little interesting fun fact this morning.
Still here, though.
Very different circumstances, without question. Do want to mention real quickly, yesterday I attended the Historical Society's Board Meeting where I serve as ex officio for the county. It was good conversation about a number of topics they're working on, including some upgrades in Capitol Campaign, but also importantly, their plans for the 250th Celebration, which is coming up quite soon. Looking forward to that, and I think that'll be quite impressive and important for anybody in the county to visit. Also, just wanted to mention, Commissioner Kyler did mention this morning, we were at the Employee Service Recognition Breakfast. And if I got my notes correct, I think it was a total of 2,010 years of service, which is quite exceptional. I believe the longest employee or longest period of time that employee was mentioned time-wise this morning was 40 years. So thank you.
Forty-five.
I'm sorry, 45.
And we had several 40s.
Yeah, there were several 40s. I knew that. I stand corrected. Thank you. Do greatly appreciate all the service and dedication by our employees, not only those at the breakfast, but all our employees. And it was, as always, a good morning. A great way to start today. That's all for me.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I'm going to reiterate and echo the compliments of my colleagues and our friends up here for Commissioner Ed Rothstein and his appointment by the governor to head up the Department of Veterans and Military Families. Ed, I sincerely congratulate you, and I really could not think of anybody better suited to fulfilling that role.
Thank you.
I'll be quick as well, just a couple of things, because I know we have a lot to get to today. So first of all, I had the pleasure of joining my colleagues last week for a meeting with the Maryland State Secretary of the Environment. And one of the things that we conveyed to her and her staff, you know, apart from our gratitude for her taking the time to meet with us, were concerns about the Maryland Piedmont Reliability Project power lines and the environmental areas that they're going to negatively impact. So we're going to be having our staff send over all the information we have to her staff so they're aware of everything. Second, I also had the awesome opportunity this week to join my colleagues in meeting with the President and CEO of the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond, which is the Federal Reserve Bank for this area. He's interested in getting a feel for how the economy is in this area. And I had a couple of minutes to talk to him, in which I, of course, also raised the negative impact that the power lines will have on our economy, specifically from the agricultural perspective, because agricultural industry is our number one industry in the county. Third, I was also excited, as always, to be able to attend this month's Farm Museum Advisory Board Meeting. Camps and events at the Farm Museum are well underway, and everybody's already actually getting prepared for what's coming in the autumn and the Christmas season. So everybody's already planning ahead for that. Lastly, I had the privilege of attending one of the many presentations of the America 250 Series in the county, this one at the Tawny Town Library. The program dealt with the Maryland 400. And if you don't know who they are, they are a contingent of the First Maryland Regiment, who through several unyielding charges, counterattacked and staggered the British assault on George Washington's Continental Forces during the Battle of Long Island in August 1776. And so the actions of the First Maryland, along with some troops from Pennsylvania and Delaware, were able to successfully hold off the British, allowing Washington's army to escape to fight another day. And, you know, we probably would not be here as a nation if the Maryland 400 had not made these suicidal charges to stop the British. They estimate that out of, somewhere around 256 of these men were killed or captured. And some, by some estimates, barely a dozen got back to the American lines afterwards. So that is some heroism, and it's something to, certainly to remember. It was a phenomenal presentation. I'm looking forward to more. And again, if anybody's interested in these, they have these presentations at the library, and they are all free to attend. You just have to register to attend. They're very much worth attending, attending. So that's all for me this morning. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to segue on the library, I had the opportunity to speak to the community about what's happening in Carroll County. We do the series of Commissioner breakfast. And so I was down in Eldersburg, along with Commissioner Kyler and Roberta, and it was a good opportunity. I appreciate the words of thanks from my colleagues and from the community. As the announcement came out Monday morning, I'll tell you, one of the most special gifts was on Tuesday morning, this gentleman who does those be kind signs all around, and they're beautiful. He gave me a I love veterans sign. And I don't have it with me, but it's about this big, and I was very much taken back. And I said, that will be the first thing I put up in my office. It'll be right by my chair, by my desk, because that's what it's going to be about, is taking care of veterans and our military community in a larger scope. The only other thing, and it was mentioned, a little bit about NPRP and MDE, just for information, it's in the news, that PSENG, the contracting company or business, are going back to federal court to, you know, work with the federal court system and have two, no, it's about 140 homes that they would be able to survey. And so it's to allow the PSENG surveyors to come onto those properties. I think they announced it's going to federal court. They announced it a couple of days ago. I'm not sure when the.
A question on that. It looks like they've picked up a lot of the missing names. For instance, Dave Bullinger wasn't on the first one. He is on this one, but they can't pick up us yet because they're in federal court, correct?
That's what I understand, yes.
Yeah.
Neither the counties are in.
And I just wanted to bring it to our attention, because it is a priority for all of us to continue the advocacy that this is not what we're supporting. But it is, it's out there, and it's going to be a second court. That's the we love veterans sign. And the gentleman, I mean, it just, it was awesome. It was very unexpected. It's the little things like thank you and things like that that make all the difference in the world. And with that, I am done.
It's Aaron Miller is the gentleman's name.
Eric.
Aaron Miller.
Aaron Miller. Okay.
Eric.
Eric Miller.
Yep.
Eric Miller.
Yes.
Okay, that's his commercial for the morning, Eric Miller. And he does some really cool signs.
Okay, thank you. And I'll be honest, three out of four of the commissioners is a majority, and they already congratulated you, so there's no need for me to.
Exactly. I wouldn't expect it anyway.
Okay, thank you. On a somber note, I want to mention, let me look at my phone so I do it right. Lynn Graham, two hours ago or so, posted that her mom, Dolly Snyder, passed. And probably everybody in Carroll County knows Dolly Snyder. Anybody that owned a dump truck probably bought a Snyder body for it years ago. And Lynn says about how she valued family, and two of her grandsons dealt with me through wrestling. And Dolly was a great woman, a strong personality. I think she hugged me a couple of times and pretty close to smack me a couple of times and straighten me out because I wasn't quite doing right with the grandkids. So I, the community will miss her, and I just wanted to mention it. And as already mentioned, MDE Secretary McElwain was here, and that was great, great discussion. And I'm going in maybe chronological order. Rhonda and I hit an Orioles game, and it was a good game. They lost the next day, but they won that day. Wreckin' Parks Carfest at the Farm Museum on Saturday, I got to be a judge, and there were four judges. So some of the winners were my selections, some were not, as it goes with judging like that. And the only thing, the only reluctance I have in being a judge, there were a lot of local people there, and I probably didn't get to talk to a lot of people because we were walking the cars. And we were trying to be discreet, not look like judges. And so I didn't get to talk to a lot of people. But I think they had like 130-some cars there. Seventy of them were, showed up that day, did not pre-register, which is allowed. But so they had a, they had a great event. Solar hearings, and I don't know if legal wants to comment on it, but there's a lot, there's been some rescheduling, there's been some strange, there was a substitute judge. And a lot of people are taking that as, as it means a lot on which way PSC's deciding. I don't think it means a thing. I think one of the judges maybe, may have been ill or had a reason to cancel stuff. So I don't take too much out of it, and continue to attend them and continue to argue, or continue to speak your mind. We had Transit Advisory Council, a great meeting. And as, as it goes, there's roots almost ready to expand. There's a couple of roots that aren't doing quite as well. It's hard to judge the why. And in a way, in some communities, if there's two people on it, it's very valuable to those two people. So we've invited Commissioner Vigliotti to attend the next two meetings to discuss what's always going on in Tawny Town. Their ridership's down like 20%, and nobody's sure why. And they've never included Union Bridge and New Windsor. And I know there's people there asking for a stop there. Now, whether or not that's efficient and worth doing, I'm not sure. But since that's, since Hampstead's doing quite well, and the problems are in your area, we wanted to invite you.
We always try to be problematic up my way.
Yeah, no, thank you. And thank you for agreeing to try to get there. Federal Reserve was here with Tom Barkin, and a great meeting. It's a, I loved, and I want to send him a thank you email, and I want to remember this, which 50/50 of that'll happen. His driving in the fog was a perfect analogy for how businesses have to deal with some of this stuff. He said it more than once, and I got to talk to him outside a little bit. He, he went to Harvard undergraduate, graduate school, and law school, which is, not a, not a whole lot do all three. But, but I thought that was interesting. We talked about, I happen to know one of the people on his board and know a little bit about Harvard's campus. So we all talked about that. And it was interesting. And he, he does a lot of that, and I want to thank Economic Development for getting him here. And I'm curious to hear how the rest of the day went. I mean, he started with breakfast with us and ended with dinner with some people at 6:00. So they, he was here a long day and talked to a diverse group of community members. And it's interesting, Commissioner Gordon mentioned the other commissioner that had to be replaced. I was a good friend with, with the Danner family when all that went on. And, and it's interesting, I'm sure everything said about us is true and correct. But what you heard about him is that he quit in less than a week because things were so corrupt. And he obviously served way more than a week, but he didn't finish the term. And it was, it created a lot of messages throughout the community.
So you're, you know, putting a dead guy and a guy who quit, you know, in comparison to me. I'm like, I'm not sure where to take this.
That's right. Because 99% of us finish our obligation.
I am really looking forward to hearing about the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, I'll be quick. I'll be quick. Board of Education voted yesterday to approve the charter school. And I just want to mention, because that could or not affect our budget, it definitely affects their budget, depending on the students that go there, whether they're new students from homeschooling, private schools, whatever, or they're existing students, they could get some more money from the state. But even if they do, it, my guess is, a charter school could cost Carroll County $2 million to $4 million, depending on where their students come. But I think people need to understand, this group that wants the charter, did their homework, got with Frederick County, did a good application, and state law says financing or fund availability cannot be a reason that you vote against having a charter school. If their application's correct and they've done their homework, it's pretty much, you have to allow it to happen. So it'll be interesting how it shakes out. But I think a lot of people are like, well, why can't they use this money for pick something, buses? They can't. And that's, that's the law. Related to that, I was invited to a MAKO AIB meeting that's 11 o'clock today. And I'm going to leave this meeting a few minutes before it and get on that. I think it's very important. MAKO's done so much for us. AIB gave a waiver to Carroll County and Carroll County only for Blueprint, and they want to talk about the future of Blueprint. So I felt that that was important enough, I needed to leave here. I know you guys will miss me, but I'm sorry. Employee recognition this morning, that was great. And that's already been mentioned, but that was great. And I want to thank HR for pulling it off. As HR tends to do, we played a, we played a game, but it will help me remember some of the people there by the answers to the, you know, it was a, I don't want HR to hear this, but it was a good game. It was, it was, it was smart and good, and it was a great ceremony. So thank you very much. Thank you, other guys. And Commissioner Gordon wants to share some excitement from the Boys and Girls Club.
Yes, we have a proclamation this morning. So we have a proclamation for Jared Jefferson for the Boys and Girls Club of Carroll County.
Come on up and grab a seat while he's talking.
Yes, please. So for Youth of the Year 2025, whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Carroll County has named Jared Jefferson as its 2025 Youth of the Year, this prestigious title is part of the Boys and Girls Club of America's premier recognition program, celebrating the achievements of club members. And Boys and Girls Clubs are located throughout Carroll County, providing youth development programs to more than 900 youths who aim to be tomorrow's leaders. And Boys and Girls Clubs are the setting where great futures start, and they are the forefront of efforts to support academic success, healthy lifestyles, and character and leadership development. And the Youth of the Year title is a prestigious honor bestowed upon an exemplary youth, young person, excuse me, in recognition of leadership service, academic excellence, and dedication to live a healthy lifestyle, and is the highest honor a teen member can receive. And Jared is a member of the Boys and Girls Club of Carroll County who served as a leader and mentor embodying the club's mission, engaging in activities promoting wellness, leadership, and empowerment. As an advocate for the importance of mentorship and self-improvement that promote mental health, Jared has used his voice to inspire youth throughout Carroll County. And additionally, Jared has been recognized as the Maryland State Youth of the Year, and serves as a role model leader and advocate for many youths involved with Boys and Girls Clubs, both locally and nationally. Now, therefore, we the Board of Carroll County Commissioners do wish to honor Jared Jefferson as an outstanding citizen and champion of Carroll County's youth, and do hereby proclaim Thursday, July 17th, 2025, as Jared Jefferson Day, adopted this 17th day of July 2025, signed by the Board of Carroll County Commissioners.
Thank you.
And, and congratulations. This is awesome. But I'd like to hear, how many has Carroll County had win the state?
So first, I want to say I enjoyed watching Jared's face because I did not tell him what was happening today. I just said that the commissioners wanted him to come. They wanted to talk to him about what his experience at Boys and Girls Club was like. So as you guys were reading the proclamation, I could see him like, oh, my gosh. But yes, it's, we are so proud of our leadership program at Boys and Girls Club. As Tom Red, Commissioner Gordon read in the proclamation, it is the highest honor that a teen member can get. And so we have had four Maryland State Youth of the Years in a row, and five out of the last six years. So we are.
And it's not, and it's not because you're paying somebody off. It's because Carroll County has excellent youth, and you develop them well.
You develop them well, and we, but we have great youth to start with. And it's not a program that's just a week or two long, you know, around the Youth of the Year title. We start working with these kids when they're in elementary school, and we build them year after year after year. And I think it shows in the amazing youth that, that we have here in Carroll County. So congratulations, Jared.
You've got such a great smile, and you pretend to be shy. Congratulations. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, I know that this could not have been an easy road for you to get. I mean, what have you had to do over the years to get where you are today?
What I've had to do, basically, was to talk to everyone possible. As I said earlier, I'm a shy person. I'm the opposite. No matter where I go to, make sure to talk to someone, look them in the eye, smile at them, and get their advice and their story, and how that can help me out into whatever goal I have, into me being currently Youth of the Year from Maryland.
That is awesome. That is absolutely awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then obviously, as both as the Maryland Youth of the Year, you also got the opportunity to go to New York. Could you tell us a little bit about that?
New York's a wonderful place to go to. And I got so many fun stories, my fellow Youth of the Years over Northeast Regionals. And then, but most of all, meeting different areas of New York, as well as like Times Square, going to see Broadway with Ms. Erin, as well as going to different stores and travels with them. And over the crazy time I was in New York, because my family members also lived there, it brought some new experiences and lessons to me. One of, always tell people around me, and that no matter where you are, you always make great things happen.
And moving forward, since you got him here today, she may con you again, and you get somewhat honored in Annapolis.
Yes, we're going to...we have the opportunity to go and meet Governor Westmore tomorrow. So we're going down there tomorrow morning. And, you know, Governor Hogan and then Governor Moore afterwards have been very supportive of Boys and Girls Clubs across the state of Maryland. And it's a big goal to make sure that every child in Maryland has access to a Boys and Girls Club. So we're going to go have JJ work his magic a little bit on Governor Moore and make sure he shares the impact of why that's important.
Yes, that's awesome. Mr. Singer, are you just here for the photo or are you going to tell us something?
So I just want to...it's great that the Department of Citizen Services and the local management board get to partner with organizations like the Boys and Girls Club. And obviously, our goal for the local management board is to help our youth to grow up to be successful adults. And Boys and Girls Club really supports that. And you can see the success they have through people like Jared and many of the other youth that we've seen. We just...we appreciate everything the Boys and Girls Club does. Congratulations, Jared. It's all about, you know, trying to see people be successful.
And I think what's really neat to say is, you know, we're in the midst of summer camp. We have 175 kids in our building every single day all summer. And all five of the Maryland Youth of the Years that we've had over the last six years are staff members this summer at that summer camp. And so it's really neat to see them, you know, come full circle as mentors. And now they're mentoring kids to, you know, have the same experiences that they've had.
So what's next?
What's next is, well, currently, I'm working towards my business management degree at Carrick Community College. So as I'm working currently during the summer as well, next school year, to graduate early. And then after that, we're going to UMD or the university. And then, like I said, I got a plan.
And he does want to join the military.
I was going to say that next.
Mr. Rothstein's out, yeah.
So later on, I'm going to join the US Air Force, hopefully, and be a wonderful...
It's the Cubs game. No, I'm kidding. No, Terry, no.
Did your dad tell you to do that since he was in the Army?
I worked hard to lobby for the Navy, but he's going with the Air Force.
Reddington Space Force.
So we're ready for a photo?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Where are your challenge points?
Yes. There you go. Okay.
You can't do it today, but you've got to teach me that smile.
You can even hear it?
Well, Erin asked me to take a picture. Okay, there we go.
Congratulations.
Can you want to reach out to me at any time? So number?
Yep, I'll connect you guys.
Commissioner Rothstein is going to share with us, right?
I do. I'll tell you though, that was awesome. That was a great testament to Carroll County, to the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, and they come back to counsel. That's...they do it right. I'd like to talk about Tammy Haynes. So who wants to come up and help me talk about Tammy?
We do.
Okay. I figure you would. You're the strong silent type, I know that. So, yeah. What? Okay, but before you do, let me just share, this is a certificate of recognition for Tammy Haynes. Recognition of the 30 years of dedicated service to Carroll County Government. We commend you for your journey that began as a case manager under the Job Training Partnership Act, JTPA, in economic development, and has led you to current role as an employment services supervisor in the same department. Throughout your career, you have consistently developed new skills and taken on greater responsibilities as you advanced within the organization. We sincerely thank you for your commitment to Carroll County Government and the residents you have proudly served. We wish you a happy and healthy retirement. And signed by all of us, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so before you get to speak, I think, either Denise?
Let me start because I was the manager at the Career Center over there and worked with Tammy many years. And as we celebrated a lot of anniversaries this morning, you know, I was thinking about Tammy as well. And she's one of the good ones and has been very dedicated, has counseled and helped thousands of our Carroll County citizens to find their path through, you know, times of trouble or times of uncertainty. And she's been a really steady hand there. Many times, when you have transition in an agency and an organization, which we did over the years, Tammy was the one that was still standing and still there and filling in and taking on additional caseloads and, you know, helping to be there for the citizens and for the other staff. And that's why she was recognized and elevated to the Employment Services Supervisor position. And, you know, she's just a very dedicated employee, very smart, very steady, very calm. And I think, you know, that goes a long way. You know, you need people like Tammy on your team. And I'm, you know, very privileged to have worked with her and thank her for all of her years of service. And we're definitely sorry to see her go. But like I told her, I said, I think she's doing it right, you know, because she's, you know, taken some trips and, you know, she's retiring and, you know, she's done it, really enjoy life. And so I really do wish her well.
Thank you.
So honoring Tammy, she's somebody that's touched thousands of lives quietly, but always profoundly. And for over 30 years, Tammy's been our unsung hero of our workforce, as you've heard. Through recessions, layoffs, and life's hardest transitions, she's supported and counseled our citizens with compassion, empathy, professionalism, and humor. She has guided people through job loss, connected them with training, and helped them find sustainable career pathways, often when they couldn't even see their way forward for themselves. Her calm presence, sharp mind, and kind heart have changed lives. Tammy's been a role model for so many of us, both staff and job seekers alike. Her legacy isn't just programs that she's leading, it's the people she uplifted, the dignity she restored, and the hope she quietly sparked in thousands. Thank you, Tammy. You leave behind a legacy of service, and you'll be deeply missed. And we wish you joy and adventure in your next chapter. I just have to say, I think giving people a visual, after the 2009 recession, I wasn't at workforce development yet, but people were lining up in the hallways to meet with our staff, such as Tammy and Tammy Casson in the back of the room. And they worked tirelessly. Over time, she had two small twins that she was raising at the time, but the work of our citizens came first. And that's an example she gives to all of us. Thank you.
And I think another testament, you know, for Tammy is the staff that are here that, you know, support and love her and care for her as a colleague. And I think that's a great testament, too.
Well, thank you for everything and congratulations. And so Denise had mentioned you're going on some trips. Is there one in particular that you're looking forward to more than the others?
So I'm getting ready to go to Maui at the end of the month, so I'm really excited about that. I haven't been to Hawaii before, so that should be great.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Well, I hope you enjoy it, and God bless you and everything you do after this.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's truly been an honor to be able to serve the citizens of the county and being able to help individuals that really needed help. And then seeing them go from, you know, where they were to actually thriving. So it really has been a rewarding career, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Tammy.
Yes, congratulations and thank you for everything.
Do you want to include everybody here? No, we can stay up here and all of you can be in front of us. A nice team.
Good idea.
Come on, team. Get up there. No, come on.
Tammy family.
Yeah.
Chris?
It's like a rule, if you show up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I looked up here, I went yesterday when all the way...
It was bad.
Seven o'clock?
Oh, no, no, no.
Later?
Torrential rain after long, around the Antrump, and I heard that was a...
Yeah.
Manchester, yeah. It was great.
Yeah.
Definitely a shift of topics.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. As you mentioned, we're here to request promulgation of the 2025 Carroll County Radiological Ingestion Exposure Pathway Plan. The plan outlines the procedures and guidelines for agencies that would need to respond to a radiological emergency. We do have a short, very short presentation. It's about three slides. And I'll turn it over to Assistant Manager Jacob Hill to go over those slides.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. So as Valerie mentioned, we just have a very quick slideshow presentation for you to kind of give some background and the purpose to the plan. So the background is, our county is located within 50 miles of Peach Bottom Atomic Power Station in York County, Pennsylvania. Therefore, we are required by the federal government, FEMA in particular, requires our county to create and maintain this type of plan to address any response that may be needed if a major incident happens at that facility. Response to a radiological incident requires coordination amongst all levels of government. So we work with, you know, most county level agencies, the state, as well as the federal government. Throughout the planning process to this plan, we reached out to agencies that we don't normally reach out to. Just to kind of give you a visual, that is the radius of Peach Bottom. You can see that a significant portion of the county is within that ingestion zone. So the purpose, really the plan helps provide a unified, coordinated, organized response to a radiological incident occurring at Peach Bottom. It also establishes procedures, guidance, roles, and responsibilities, you know, within that ingestion zone, and then really provide awareness and guidance to responding agencies. So it's a very comprehensive plan, but it's a much-needed plan.
And required by law.
Yes.
And it is required by law. We told you it was a short slideshow.
Motion to endorse and promulgate the 2025 Carroll County Radiological Ingestion Exposure Pathway Plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Now we want to talk about a request for a reduction in review fees for Dublin Manor.
Good morning.
Morning, everybody.
So I'm joined here today by David B. Craft, who is one of our Development Review Coordinators. He's here to answer all of the difficult questions. And also here, joined here by Mr. Tracy, who is the owner of the property that we are discussing. We're here by his request. So I just wanted to lay some quick information, background information, to kind of set the stage, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Tracy. So just so we define terms and everybody's on the same page and understands what we're talking about, there are three different types of developments that we typically go through here in Carroll County. The first is called an off-conveyance, and those are two lots that can be created from a parcel if that parcel existed prior to April 23rd, 1963. So we're often asked, how many off-conveyances are out there? That's a very difficult question to answer because it takes a lot of research, as you'll see, going back through the deeds and other types of land records to determine exactly how many off-conveyances a property may have. So then, as we talk about what we term kind of regular subdivision, although off-conveyances are a type of subdivision, we have minor subdivisions, which are the first three lots taken from a parcel after the off-conveyances have occurred. So minors are essentially a three-lot subdivision. If you go over those three lots, now you're into four lots or more, we now consider that a major subdivision. And the reason why we differentiate those is our code has different requirements as far as going to Planning Commission, review, those types of reviews, and so on. We try and make it easier. The code makes it easier for those minor subdivisions. We don't have as many review steps. And so associated with that are different fees related to those different types of As I mentioned, subdivisions, minor subdivisions, they're not subject to Chapter 156, which is our APFO. We do not take them to public meetings such as Technical Review Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, and so on. Major subdivisions, we do take them to Technical Review Committee and to Planning and Zoning Commission twice, if not three times, depending on the size of the subdivision, and they're subject to 156. So there's more that goes on with major subdivisions. And we have to have some sort of distinction there between a minor and major. It just happens that our distinction is, when you go from three lots to four lots, that's where the distinction is. And part of that is because we don't want developers to piecemeal these projects. So you don't want a three-lot subdivision coming in, and then two days later, another three-lot subdivision on the same property, and so on and so forth. So we have to draw that line at some point. So the property that we're looking at, that we're discussing, the image is shown here. So originally, in 1968, the first off-conveyance was taken. And then in 1972, a second off-conveyance was taken. Then in 1975, the subdivision process started. And that first subdivision in 1975 was called German Acres, and that was Lot 1. Then in 1987, the property started getting subdivided again, and it was termed Dublin Manor. And the first, Double Manor 1 was subdivided in 1987, Double Manor 2 in 1990. And then we get to, more recently, Double Manor 3 was subdivided. Now you notice here that we actually made a mistake as this was going through the process. When the Double Manor 3 came in, because it was termed Dublin Manor 3, the assumption was that was the third lot subdivided. What we didn't realize was that German Acres, back in 1975, was actually the first lot. So the first lot that Mr. Tracy looked to that was subdividing, which was Dublin Manor 3, should have been a major subdivision.
And it doesn't matter who owned the property as far as these rules, but at what stage... And it doesn't matter who owned the property as far as these rules, but at what stage did he become owner?
Mr. Tracy, how long have you owned the property?
What year did you become owner of the property?
Ninety-six. So there were, there were two subdivision lots, but what you're saying may be three.
Yes. Yep, yeah, you're absolutely right. The subdivision and the rules and so on, those go with the property, not necessarily the owner of the property. So regarding fees, then, off-conveyances, there are no county review fees. We do not have any records. We looked, we couldn't find any records as far as how many review, what review fees were charged in 75, 87, 90 for the first three subdivision lots. The fourth lot, Mr. Tracy, was charged as a minor subdivision, which was thirty, just over $3,600. And again, that was a mistake that we made. Then with that being the fourth lot, that actually should have been processed as a major. We're not going back or anything like that, looking to recoup any of those. That was to his advantage. So what we're discussing here today is actually the fifth lot. And again, because at four, that became a major subdivision, he's then subject to the major subdivision fees, which are $11,600 and some dollars. So it's kind of complicated, which is why David is here to answer the tough questions. But yes.
The $11,000 figure, technically, that could be more, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So the first time that we went through the calculating of fees, there are some things like engineering fees and so on, related to the entrance onto the roadway and so on. When Mr. Tracy indicated that he was concerned with the fee amounts, our bureau chief took a hard look at those and was able to reduce some of them within the gray areas of the calculation of the fees. At this point, as staff, we don't feel that we're able to reduce anything further, and so that's why we're here, is if it's, as I've mentioned in previous discussions, review fees are an attempt to offset some of the costs. The costs are there. Whether the citizens of Carroll County pay for the costs or the developer pays for the costs, that distribution is entirely up to the board.
When did this property go into Agpres? Previous owner, correct? Not?
No, I put it in Agpres.
You did. You brought it in. Okay. So it came in then.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I don't know if it matters, but the Agpres Board, you met with them, they met yesterday and voted unanimously to support us considering a reduction.
Yes. So regarding Agpres, what the primary purpose of Agpres is to remove development potential. However, it's very common that preserved properties allow for children's lots. And that is what Mr. Tracy has been, been developing our children's lots.
Number four and number five are intended to be children's lots.
That's correct. So that's, that's on the Agpres side of things. From the development perspective, it's still a subdivision, it's still division, so it still has to go through our process. Yeah.
Is the, I apologize.
No, 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 I'm, I'm good.
So is the reduction to $11,682, or is the request for reduction from the $11,682?
So as staff, when we reviewed the fees, we reduced it from, I think it was around $16,000 down, or eighteen?
He was eighteen.
Down to eleven. So now the request, I believe, from Mr. Tracy is to reduce it further down from the eleven.
My challenge is not, kind of where you were, where you said a minute ago, is who pays? Who pays for the review and the workload that you're doing? Is it the taxpayers? Is it the developer, the owner of the property? It sounds like you've already reduced the fees. And if we reduce them anymore, what we're doing is we're putting the burden on the taxpayers, you know, in the county. This may be a small amount of dollars to the taxpayers in the county because it comes out to less than a penny or whatever, but if we set a presence this way, people are going to come in asking for, unless I'm missing something, this will set a precedence for others that have, you know, these type of fees. And why would we consider not approving others if we approve this one? So I, I'm concerned that, yeah, I got, putting the burden on the taxpayers, the way you said, I, I have concern, unless I'm missing something. I don't know what I'm missing.
And, and I think, and you guys chime in, I think this has happened only once or twice in Carroll County recent history. One of the times might have been with us that somebody wanted to reduce fee, right?
Yes. Searching our collective memories and going back a little over a decade, the only other situation that we were able to find or could recall was a reduction in fees for the Hampstead Firehouse, and that the fees were reduced, and I think also the bonding requirements and so on were reduced. So, but that is the only case that of, as such.
But, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is it proper to ask, what are you asking for? You know, you paid $3,600 last time, right now it's $11,500. What would you like to see it?
Well, first off, the perspective I bring is, I'm not a developer. I'm, I'm having child lots as allowed by Agpreservation. So this is not a for-profit scenario. I think that's a little different. A child's lot is, is different than just developing a farm and creating lots because you're, certain restrictions that you have to have with a child's lot. So I would look at it as, I think the simplest thing to do would be just to treat, treat all of the lots as minor subdivision lots, when they, when they are child's lots. Because we're not for a prof, I'm not a for-profit developer. I'm just doing something that's allowed in my easement.
You'd like to see the eleven go down to the $3,600 you were charged.
I would like to see it treated just like the last one. It was a simple, it's less burden on the county. They don't have to go through all the extra things that they have to charge, all the extra fees for. They just treat it as simple. And, and the advisory board was in favor of, I'm not saying specifically that, but in favor of, of something like that.
If we, when was the code put in place defining Chapter 155 with the major subdivision, three to four? When, when was that?
Here's the tough question for you.
So my guess would be that April 23, 1963 date. So that was the date of subdivision adoption in Carroll County.
Yeah. So, so this has been a known fact since the 60s. I understand what we're asking, and it's not about for-profits, about property owner and property owner's rights. The Hampstead situation, I think I would see different because they are serving a greater community. And this is not. This is serving property owners', you know, needs. I don't believe in subsidizing to a point where we are putting this burden on taxpayers. And that's, in this case, what I think we would be doing. I do believe in subsidizing on certain, you know, issues and concerns, but this, if it's an individual, and I apologize, I'm looking at you, but I should be looking this way. I, I just, I, I have concern that taxpayers' dollars would go to subsidize a property.
Can I speak to that?
Well, let's go this way first.
To your point, I mean, first and foremost, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Heim, but you mentioned that this is not part of the Agpres program. This is part of how we look at, you know, property. So property, so from that standpoint, they're two totally separate situations, number one. Number two, this has been in effect since 1963, which I find interesting. But then you mentioned that the minor lot technically was supposed to be a major lot, correct?
Yeah, that was a mistake that we made.
So in theory, and I don't know if you can answer this question, but I'm curious just for all of us in our knowledge, what should have been the price for that $3,636.90 lot in, the other one in 2025? What should that have been? Should that have been $18,000? Should that have been $12,000?
Well, yeah, it should have been the $11,000.
Okay, so, so if we're looking at, and I'm just, I'm not doing the math completely here, but we're looking at, the fifth lot was $18,000, it was dropped to $11,682.90, which is a 35% discount. So then technically, if the other one should have been the same price, that would have been well over $20,000. And I understand where that falls for both county cost and also the property owner. But we're looking at, I don't know, what are we looking at here? $15,000, $16,000 versus the cost, it should have been 18 for one. So first off, there's a 35% discount, and realistically, it should have been well above the total of these two, even if it were priced at the $11,600. So I think my concern is this has been in place since 63. I understand there was an error, which I'd like to know how that occurred, but that's a whole other topic. But then we're still coming well within, well beyond a discount, even if it had been at full price, at the, at the full price for the two lots, being that they would have been both major subdivisions. So I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about that, but then I have to ask the next question, which, Mr. Burke, that might be a question for you. If we were to do this, to Commissioner Rothstein's point, would this be setting a legal precedent, not only for future situations like this, but then would this also open a situation in which the other previous individuals, if anyone else has ever done this, could come back on us and say, well, what about me?
Certainly, as to your, as to future landowners, you would, you would have to articulate a reason why you granted Mr. Tracy his relief and why you're not granting him, if the circumstances are the same. You'd have to articulate some reason.
But I mean, would that put us in any position in the past? I mean, I don't know if we know of any specific examples.
No, I think they had the opportunity to come to you in the past, and now it's not too.
But then, back to my initial point, what concerns me, which was mentioned by Commissioner Rothstein, is if it's been deep discounted, and I hate to use that terminology already, and then we're looking to discount it even more, you know, we sit up here every day and we talk about budget and we talk about expenses, and I understand where the property owner's coming from, and I get that. I just have reservations, given the fact that it's already well below the threshold it would have been, had it been properly calculated the first time. So just my thoughts.
Yeah, I, just a couple of quick comments. First of all, unfortunate is not, probably not the right term to use, but the timing of this may, is, is a bit acute because the board has been spending the last couple of months just taking a look at review fees and things that we charge, to try to bring them up to the current standard and cost of living in 2025. So that's something that this board has particularly been focused on. I had, I had two questions, the why and what, and I think, sir, you accurately answered the what part, what, what you're looking for. As for the why part, I just, if the, if the county didn't, if the county didn't make a mistake that disadvantaged this gentleman, then I think I'd have a difficult time approving it. But if that's the case, I would just want to make sure that we're all hearing that from you. If the county made a mistake that resulted in this situation, then that's something we could probably rectify. Otherwise, I think I have a difficult time with it.
Yeah, so actually, it's quite the opposite. The mistake that we made was to his benefit. So we should have charged him. Now, again, looking at the nuances of those gray areas in the calculations, some were between $11,000 to $18,000 when the last lot was done.
Okay.
But instead, the mistake we made was considering it a minor because of the naming of the, of the subdivision.
Okay.
His Lot 3 came in, and the assumption then was, well, this is the third lot, so it's still a minor. But it was actually because of the other subdivision of the property, it was actually the major, and we should have charged him more. So the mistake was not charging as much as, as we should have when the first lot that he was subdividing came in. So.
Yeah, I just want to give you a chance to kind of go over that again, because that's important.
Yep.
For the citizens of the county to be treated fairly.
Yes.
And us to fix it if something's gone wrong.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
To keep things going and to allow for discussion on a motion, I'll make the motion that we do not reduce the review fees for the Dublin Manor subdivision.
I'll say, and can I ask?
Wait, you can second.
We have to have a second.
Oh, no, okay, a second. But so where do children's lots fall in zoning versus minor subdivisions? Like what distinguishes the two?
There, there's no distinction.
The children's lot's part of Agpres, not part of our zoning.
Correct, yes.
It's an Agpres term.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're separate categories, but they're similar, but they are separate?
It's only used in agricultural preservation. It's a, it's a lot that can be developed, I think of it that way.
Okay, all right.
I apologize. We have a motion and a second. I need to leave for my other meeting. I stayed a couple of minutes late, so if you can take over, I'll be an abstention, but leaving. But I think, I think I see the writing on the wall.
So Commissioner Vigliotti, I'd be happy to clarify. So as part of the Agpres program, when a property is put under easement, in the terms of that easement, because it's recognized that these are families and that they may have children that, that they want to set lots aside, there are allowances for what are called children's lots. And there are restrictions on those children's lots. And I don't know all of them off the top of my head. Mr. Tracy may have those off the top of his head, but they relate to, the lot can only be developed for a child. A child has to live there for a certain number of years and so on. And if the property is sold, that, that right for the child lot goes away. So the next owner does not have a right to that child lot. So that's, those are the kind of the general terms. So those are all Agpres rules, as they are in the easements. From a development review perspective, it's still the subdivision of land and so on. So those, those properties have to go through a subdivision process, whether it's a minor or a major or however.
Okay, so, so, and take me through this one step further. So I, from, from the other side of things, if I had a children's lot or child lot, right, and then whatever the circumstances were, they are no longer children's lots, right? Do they, where, where does a minor subdivision come into play after the fact, or does it not?
You need to divorce the two things. They're two totally separate things.
I just, I wanted to make sure that the point that Mr. Tracy raised about why we don't just treat children's lots as minor subdivisions, I wanted to make sure that we pursued that to the evidentiary end.
Yeah. So it's, it, it's all in the rules in the code related to subdivisions. So if you have, say you have four children, and your, the lot yield for your property allows for four children's lots, four child lots, four children, child lots would be considered a major subdivision if you did them all at once because it's greater than the three for a minor. Does that make sense? And, and so maybe you don't develop them all at the same time. Maybe you come in and you do the first child's lot, so that's a minor. You do the second child's lot, it's still a minor. Third child's lot, it's still a minor. You do that fourth, because now you, you tip the threshold in the code, you would then be treated as a major.
Okay. Now, thank you very much.
Sure.
Gentlemen, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, sir? Yes, sir?
I wanted the, a chance to explain this a little bit more. I mean, is it too late for that?
Well, we, we went ahead, we made the motion and we carried it. We could certainly hear from you, and if there is a change of mind, another motion could be made. But if you want to say something else, it certainly led you.
It's important for you all to understand that what a child's lot is, there's certain, it has to be clustered. Like, it's not just like developing the farm and putting the house wherever you want it. It has to be a certain size. It can only be a small-sized lot. It's not like regular development. So, so that's why I feel, and Chris, I got a question for you. Is it more of a burden on the citizens if it's minor subdivision? Is that a burden, you know, if we pay the $3,600 or whatever it was, like we did the first lot, is that a burden?
Is it, so, yes, there are, there are costs associated with staff time and so on. The, the purpose of the development review fees are to offset the costs of staff processing the development. And so whether it's a, a minor, a major, or, or so on, even off-conveyances, there are, there are costs associated with that. But the Board of County Commissioners at one point determined that they would not charge for off-conveyances a certain amount for minors and a certain amount for majors to offset those, those staff costs.
But if they were to agree to look at this as minor subdivision, it would create no extra burden on the, on the taxpayers. You're not reducing any of those fees.
So there, because it's a major, there are additional costs to the taxpayers for staff salaries to process that major subdivision. So yes, there are additional costs.
If it's a major. So, but if we, if they were to make the decision going forward, child's lot should just be looked at as minor subdivision. That changes the process, which in turn saves money.
But that would.
On my end and, and on the county's end. On my end and, and on the county's end.
That would require a code change, though.
Or an exception. Ag Preservation child's lots already have exceptions. They're not, they're not subject to forced conservation. They're not subject to the right of way, I'm probably misspeaking, but the right of way rules for developing a lot. So the county has already made exceptions for child's lots. And I'm only asking, one more exception would just be considerate to be a minor subdivision because they're not all being done at one time. I'm not, I'm not a developer coming in on a hundred acre farm and building six houses. I'm just providing a child's lot. And, and to think about why child's lots were developed, they were for developed so a family member that was associated with the farm could live on the farm and be there to help, part-time or full-time. That's kind of the essence of the whole, the whole system, why it was put into place. And that's, that's my perspective, that's the way I see it. I don't, I don't see it as we're going to cost the county more money because they reduced the fees for major subdivision. There's more, more fees involved with that. If you just stick to simple minor subdivision, I think the whole, it's just, it's just a simple solution going forward. And as you spoke earlier, it's, it's, it's happened very few times, if ever, in the past. And when I talked to the administrator of Ag Preservation, he didn't know of a time where this has come up. And the advisory board, they didn't know anything about this, this rule, or had, had never come before them. So I think it's, it's not something to just tread lightly on and be more thoughtful about.
Well, perhaps it's something we could look at with zoning in the future. But as for today, are any other thoughts or motions from the board? Alright, thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, we have contract award for 2025 hot mix asphalt paving. Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Engineering requests your approval to award the contract for the 2025 hot mix asphalt paving one to M.T. Laney Company Incorporated in the amount of four million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents. This work consists of paving approximately twelve miles on twenty-three county roadways. This amount is within the FY26 approved budget.
I will move that Board of Commissioners award the contract for 2025 hot mix asphalt paving one to M.T. Laney Company Incorporated in the amount of four million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Up next, we have contract award for feasibility study for Circuit Courtroom Number Six renovation.
We might need to put this off, I have no, from building instructions.
Okay. Yeah, we.
If you're okay with that.
Two, three.
Oh, there she is.
Okay, perfect. No worries, no worries, welcome.
Good morning. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Building Construction requests your approval to award a contract for a feasible, feasibility study for the Circuit Courtroom Number Six renovation to Crabtree, Roarbaugh and Associates in the amount of seventy-three thousand, six hundred dollars. This purchase will be made via Carroll County Term Contract Number Twelve, Zero, Two, Eight, that was competitively bid. This purchase is within the FY26 approved budget.
And I'm going to move that the Board of Commissioners approve the contract for a feasibility study to Crabtree, Roarbaugh and Associates in the amount of seventy-three thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, just one quick question, will there be a timeline that they have to adhere to in terms of getting it done?
Yeah, I believe their proposal said sixteen weeks, and this is just the feasibility stage. So we're going to give them three full concepts with estimates to let them know what their options are with the funds that are available.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, up next, utility installation upgrade for the State's Attorney's Building. The new State's Attorney's Building, as is emphasized.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Building Construction requests your approval to award a contract utility installation upgrade for the new Office of the State's Attorney Building to BG&E in the amount of forty thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. This purchase is within the FY26 approved budget.
Was this, this wasn't competed? I mean, it's BG&E.
It's BG&E, there's no way to compete it.
Okay, I didn't need to hear that last part, but that's okay. I move the Board of Commissioners approve the contract for utility installation upgrade to BG&E in the amount of forty thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Up next, we have contract approval for the Public Safety Training Center, the installation of a new water line.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Building Construction requests your approval to award a contract for the installation of a new water line at the Public Safety Training Center to S. Works Construction Corporation in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. This purchase will be made via Sourcewell-Gordian Contract Number M.D.R. Five, Zero, Three, Zero, Four, Two, Five, S.W.C. That was competitively bid. This purchase is within the FY26 approved budget.
I'd like to hear more about this.
Okay, alright, so, so this is in preparation for Phase Two, which is currently in design. As we were going through design, we realized that the water main, that's currently six inches with a four inch meter on it, wasn't large enough. So they're currently already having minor issues on the campus. But obviously, with the additions of additional hydrants and other things as part of Phase Two, we need to increase this. We're doing this as a separate project because we were so far along on Phase Two that if we had our civil engineer go back and make this part of their LOD and their scope of work, it would have caused a further delay on Phase Two. So we hired a separate engineer, and now we're doing a separate contract because this work can be done independently of the Phase Two work.
And we've used S. Works before?
We, Carroll County, I don't believe has, but I have at my previous employer.
Move the Board of Commissioners approve contract for the installation of a new water line at the Public Safety Training Center to S. Works Construction Corporation in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
If you'd like, Commissioner Rothstein, I can verify if we have used S. Works, just for your.
We have?
I can verify, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
If you can, that'd be great.
I'll send you all an email and let you know.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, too, by the way.
Thank you.
Up next, contract renewal for Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Solid Waste requests your approval to renew the yearly contract with Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority in the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and forty-seven cents. The Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority is an agency that provides waste management, contract and project management, planning and financing services, among other benefits, for its member jurisdictions. And these funds are approved in the FY26 budget.
How many years have we been using?
We've been a member of them since the early nineties, I think I can trace it back to ninety-three.
And are you on the board?
I am no longer on the board, my four-year term ended, it's Brian Bokey. Director Bokey is now on the board.
That's right.
They wouldn't let me do it again.
I move that the Board of Commissioners renew the contract for FY2026 with the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority in the amount of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Yes, congrats.
Thank you.
Up next, financial and banking services. Morning, ladies, how are you both today?
Morning. Doing well, how's everybody?
Doing well, thank you very much.
Um, good morning, we are here before you because Commissioner Rothstein is leaving us.
That's why.
That's why. Um, you're currently as one of the signers, authorized signers on our bank accounts and all of our accounts. So we are here to request the approval of resolutions for multiple depositories as well as other financial institutions. Our recommendation is to continue with what, he was the president of the board at that time, so Commissioner Kyler is the president currently. And we were requesting that you authorize him to be one of the authorized banking signatures as well as myself, we continue as comptroller. Bobby Jeff out here, she's our division manager of accounting. And then Kyle Henry is also our fourth signer as investment officer.
As I wipe my hands from this, I'll move that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution agreement for deposit account.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now we will.
I'm sorry, it's all the little details you have to think of when, when we have a change, so.
Upsetting the apple cart here.
Yeah, exactly.
But I'm not dying or quitting within a few days.
Let's hope not.
So next, we will go into public comment.
So I have a.
Any public comment with us here today?
Yes, Mr. Dan Gettard, if you go to the microphone behind you there.
The one right behind you. Right there.
Either one, you can sit or, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners, and as a veteran, congratulations.
Thank you.
I just, I had, I'm going to give you a real quick synopsis of my experience here in Carroll County. I relocated to Carroll County approximately three years ago. I built my home on South Pleasant Valley Road. If you're not familiar with it, it's the road that runs along Island Green. And the address that was given to me upon building my home was thirteen sixty-five Pleasant Valley Road South, or thirteen sixty-five South Pleasant Valley Road. Unfortunately, there's a thirteen sixty-five Pleasant Valley as well. I have, I have experienced enormous issues with that addressing. And most recently, I had an issue where I'm filing for a permit here with the county, again, regarding my property. And when I went through the administration section of planning and zoning, I was given this form, which I'd be happy to present to you, that shows the address is thirteen sixty-five Pleasant Valley. Upon correcting the young lady that was handling the paperwork, on numerous occasions, she told me that it's showing up in the computer as south, but it's not on the paperwork. Every thing that I'm getting from planning and zoning negates the south identification. And this creates problems with your inspectors, they show up at the wrong place. And I, I'm not saying that no one's doing their job. I just think that somebody needs to take the bull by the horns and either correct the computer system or advise the administrators. That's my first, that's my first and primary issue. Second thing is, I was told by planning and zoning, as well as permits, that there was no requirement for a building permit for a container on a property, or a seed container on a property. After that, after that discussion back in March, I purchased and placed a seed container on my property. And I did tell the individuals when I did it that I was probably going to put a roof over it because I planned on cutting vents in the ceiling of it. They said it wasn't any problem. Only after a neighbor of mine filed a complaint did I find out through further investigation here on site that zoning says that you can only have a container for two months, up to a six-month continuance on a property before it's considered permanent, and then you have to roof it and side it, a seed container. And I just think that the people downstairs in planning and zone, planning and permits need to, need to communicate and make sure that they're telling people the proper thing so that I can make an educated decision on how I want to proceed. This has cost me thousands of dollars that I didn't anticipate. That's it, gentlemen. And again, congratulations, Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you very much.
I realize this isn't a, we don't typically do question and answer, but if I could, would I, could I ask the gentleman one question? I know you mentioned the issue with the address being south versus the other address.
Correct.
Go to the mic, so we're televised, that's all.
Just, just out of curiosity, I know you said you're having issues from the permit side. Are you also having any experience with mail and postal? I assumed you did, but I just wanted to ask, okay.
Yeah, the, the gentleman at thirteen sixty-five, gosh, what is his name? Lester, Mr. Lester, he gets my packages all the time. I don't in, in turn get his. But everyone just avoids the S or the south on my address and delivers it to him. I mean, I'm just in this project with the roofing. I had both companies, the ones that supplied the roofing materials and the construction equipment, both of them delivered them to his front porch.
Oh, jeez.
The first day I built my house, the lumber was delivered and dropped in his front yard versus on my property. So it's a, you know, I've been dealing with it for three years.
Okay.
But the downstairs issue, I just think they need to correct it, and maybe hopefully that'll, that'll fall with it. And as I've presented her with, she'll see that it, right here and, on the application, it says Pleasant Valley Road, which is not my address.
Understood, I, I appreciate the additional information.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Y'all have a good day.
Yep, you too.
You too.
And the other public commenter we have is Andrew Manning.
Thank you, hi, my name is Andrew Manning. Before we get to the end today, I just want to go ahead and do a few breathing exercises to take in how safe and comfortable this room is today. Breathe in. We want to thank the officer who moved from the entrance downstairs up two flights of stairs to make us all safe and comfortable today. We want to thank Jim DeWise, who unlawfully tried to trespass me from the public meetings on Thursdays. Okay, now that we got that out of the way, today I'm here to talk about NPRP. The last two meetings prior to last week, something stuck out to me, and I think I know why. I think it's because I heard it about ten to twenty times. Hundred thousand, why not a one million? If any, that rings a bell to anybody, Mr. Rothstein said it. Um, well, I'm here to solve all that today. One thing came to mind, I believe it was Benjamin Franklin, you have to forgive me, the details are a little fuzzy. I believe it was Benjamin Franklin that put, it was a nice sunny day out one day, and Benjamin Franklin put a telephone inside a helium balloon and let it float into outer space. And that is how satellites were invented. So that got me thinking. I do believe that phone is still out there in space to this day. That got me thinking. NPRP, we don't want to spend a hundred grand, we don't want to spend one million. We want to spend, I'll get to that. So what we do is we take toad, we use everything we got already in front of us. Lightning bugs, toads and worms. If anybody doesn't know, lightning bugs give off a jolt of energy every couple of seconds, that's why they light up. The toads will eat the lightning bugs, which will in turn then defecate onto the ground. And the worms will absorb that nutrients and be able to carry energy. So what I've done is, thanks to Benjamin Franklin, I've tied a worm to a toad that ate a lightning bug. I buried it in the ground, just enough the worm's still sticking out a little bit, it was a long worm. I let that sit there and resonate. Now, all we have to do is, thanks to my scientific research, we just have to wrap all that into a cord, place it underground, no more power lines. So I've emailed all this to Governor Wes Moore's secretary, and one thought comes to mind. Need a penny? Take a penny, have a penny, give a penny. Well, Carroll County residents, Maryland residents and Board of Commissioners, I want you all to know today, I am giving you guys a penny. So if you have, want to send me any thanks for all my hard work, all my scientific research, you can contact my head of public relations at Donkey Lives Matter, Don Quijones, and he will gladly accept any donations. Thank you, guys, pleasure being here. Have a good day, Mr. Rothstein, if you're leaving, it was an absolute pleasure seeing you, man, have a good one.
Thank you very much. Chris, do we have any public comment on the line?
I do not, sir.
Alright, so we'll move into administrative session open. Does anybody have anything for admin open?
I have nothing.
Alright, agenda review, Wanda, how are you?
Hi, Wanda.
So Monday, July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, shows nothing. Tuesday, July twenty-second, shows nothing. Wednesday, July twenty-third, ten o'clock a.m., I am with the Commission on Aging and Disabilities. Thursday, July twenty-fourth, eight o'clock a.m., closed admin. Nine o'clock a.m., Priority Carroll, Ms. Mary Lane Retirement.
9 o'clock a.m., Priority Carroll, Ms. Mary Lane Retirement, and then Emergency Management Month. Item Two, Resolution declaring the county's official intent to reimburse expenditures or debt proceeds. Item Three, Delegation of Authority Resolution, Proposed Amendments. Item Four, Renewal for Support and Maintenance of Computer-Aided Dispatch. Item Five, Spending Authority for the Emergency Transporter Supplemental Payment Program. Item Six, Approval to Purchase Pipelining Services. Item Seven, Approval to Purchase Traffic Paint. Item Eight, Approval to Purchase Glass Beads. Item Nine, Approval to Purchase Chipper for Fleet. Item Ten, Approval to Purchase Two SCAG Lawnmowers for Fleet. Item Eleven, Approval to Purchase John Deere 135 P-Tier Excavator for Fleet. And Friday shows nothing, Saturday shows nothing. On Sunday, Commissioner Gordon has the podcast, and I will be attending the 1 o'clock p.m. celebration for Frank Rouskinberg. Any adjustments or corrections for the first week? All right. Monday, July 28th, 2025, 8 o'clock a.m., Chamber Breakfast at the County Fair, Carroll County Ag Center, Burns Hall. Commissioners Kyler Rothstein and myself will be attending. 12 o'clock p.m., ribbon cutting in Westminster for Inteed and Broadband, and Commissioners Kyler and Rothstein will be attending.
Wanda, if you could add me to that as well, please. Thank you.
Tuesday, July 29th, shows nothing. Wednesday, July 30th, shows nothing. Thursday, July 31st, Board of County Commissioners will be meeting in open session, closed admin. Then item number two, public hearing for the 2025 Spring Amendment to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. Item number three, Approval of Resolution 02503 for Year-End Adjustments for the Budget. Item four, Approval of the Town-City Agreements for Hampstead, Manchester, New Windsor, Sykesville and Westminster. Item number five, Real Estate Brokerage Services. Item number six, Contract Renewal for Brightly Software Support. And, yeah, that's it for Thursday. Friday, August 1st, I can't believe we're in August already, two weeks. August 1st shows nothing, Saturday, August 2nd shows nothing, and Sunday, August 3rd, Commissioner Garan has the podcast.